I'd like to welcome everyone out to the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, October 17, 2019. And we will start off with a pledge of allegiance from our fellow Planning Commission member, Heather, if she wants to come up and offer that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, thank you so much. We do have a full form today with Planning Commission. I'll turn to the Planning Commission. Is there any conflicts of interest with any of the items today? Seeing none, we will move on to 2.4, which is approval of minutes for September 5, 2019.
I just had one comment on the minutes.
Okay.
On item 3.4, it says that the person who seconded was either Colby or Brody. So I think we just need to clarify who seconded that motion.
I can't hear what you're saying. Can you repeat what you just said?
Yeah, so on 3.4, on the motion, it says that either Commissioner Colby or Brody seconded the motion. So I think it just needs to clarify who actually did second that motion.
Colby, do you remember seconding that, or was that Brody?
Okay.
Okay, that was a good thing, thank you.
Then just motion to continue those to the next meeting. What need be done?
So moved.
Second.
All right, and...
Second, Adam.
Should be good now.
And we will call for a vote. Andrew?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
And Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you for noticing that, Andrea. We will move on to the administrative items with item 1 being, 3.1 being a request for a preliminary plot approval for 259 residential units in Harriman Town Center. This is on for a public hearing that was continued from October 3. I will read the policy and procedures for that. The purpose of public hearings is to allow citizens to address items on the agenda. Citizens requesting to address the commission will be asked to complete a written comment form presented to Wendy Thorpe, Deputy City Recorder. In general, the Chair will allow an individual two minutes to address the commission. A spokesperson recognized as representing group in attendance may be allowed up to five minutes. This policy applies to all public hearings. And then we will turn to city staff for item 3.1 to start.
So because you're very familiar with this project, and we've asked the applicant to just give an overview of all of the details of this project, they've actually prepared the presentation for tonight. We've uploaded it on our computer. I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this point in time in the staff report, but if you'd like to see, again, just kind of what is being requested, what is the proposal? We, based on the comments we've been gathering from the Planning Commission, we did recommend approval, subject to a number of conditions that are in your pocket. If you have any questions about those recommended conditions, I'd be happy to answer those as well.
All right, if city staff's good with that, I'll turn to the applicant then. We're hoping you don't stay all night tonight, we're trying to...
Yeah, thank you. I have a date afterwards with my daughter, so...
Oh, fine.
I had a PowerPoint presentation I wanted to go through quickly. I was asked to go through kind of A to Z, and I will be quick.
And we don't have a clicker. Yeah.
I'll do a double click, something like that. Okay, so this is just the global, we know where the property is. There was some discussion in the work session as to total number of units. Mr. Bradshaw and I have done the math calculations. We feel like we have landed there, not above, not beneath. And part of that is because of the ambiguity of permits that have been pulled and whether all of the units were built. So we feel like we've come in right at where the city had requested eight years ago. This is the overall layout of what we have proposed for the town center. This is the evolution of it. Yeah, this is a different presentation.
This is, I apologize, this is the one that Bryn had forwarded through email?
Jaren's got a backup because he's an engineer.
Okay.
I thought he put in three slides that were not ones that we went over this afternoon.
That's awesome.
Oh, you should see the carousel wheel and all that.
At least three were consistent, right? You're good?
You were getting excited to see what the project became, right?
I was getting nervous, actually.
We've decided to go to single family.
These are my children. My dog that's passed away.
We're going with estate lots.
Okay, we can go to the next slide. One of the questions that was asked last time by one of the residents is connectivity from the existing neighborhood. If you'll go to the next slide, the red indicates trails. Those will be dedicated as part of our plat. They're not dedicated through our CCNRs, and that way the city has control to come in and manage and control those in perpetuity. We go back to that slide. The crosswalks will connect to the existing neighborhood. We have not proposed tabletops there, but we proposed lit through LED flashers. And then you can see where Mr. Bradshaw and I have felt the appropriate places for connectivity. In our very first proposal, Mike and I had proposed tabletops. That is still on the table and would be part of Mike's plat because they fall on his portion, if that's where we want them. If we wanted to have that a condition and a dollar amount and built later, I think we would propose to build it sooner than later spring so that traffic, as we begin to build in here, just gets used to it and we don't have some of those nuances. We built some of these in Linden. They have slowed and stopped traffic and torn off bumpers concurrently. So I think it's something that we could do and then slow traffic, and I think it would be very successful. And we have led traffic to those areas, pedestrian traffic to those areas. Next. This is just a recap of the driveway, larger lots, 22, 23, and 24. So F-350 crew cab should be able to orient and park on these, and we should not have the problems that have existed in the past. We've done that on both communities. If you'll go to the next one. Color-coded as well, and we feel like this should solve, mitigate, and in some cases have three or four feet on those driveways. Next. This is the area, most hotly debated area. There's three things that I would like to address here. We have done hardy board in that build-out, so if you'll just notice that in the back, and I have highlighted on some of those, the corners of those buildings, I think, have taken on a brand-new facade. And then we've moved that wall and moved it internal so that now is in alignment with those building exteriors. And then we have removed some of the foliage and then done one arbor on that. And both of those are identical and would mirror. I think a couple of items to consider is the businesses on both of those corners would have a little bit of overflow in that area and/or weighting in that area, so I think it complements that corner well. So that's our main plaza, and that would be on both sides. Within the project, we've created community plazas for gathering. These will be areas that the public will have rights to go to and through and use, and these would be dedicated to the city in perpetuity but maintained by the homeowners' association. And those are scattered with the trailheads throughout the entire project, and that's the theme. So the same brick and the same wood treatment, which is a faux wood, it's a man-made material that should last forever, non-biodegradable. And the streetlights that are in harmony with our theme will be on all of those trailheads. Next. The hammock park will stay intact in the same location, even though we lost a couple percent of open space, we're still going to maintain these areas. I would like to watch with you to see how successful these turn out, and we'll expand this if we feel like there's a need or and/or do a couple of these. But this one is platted in that particular area. This is the sandbox area that we spoke about earlier. We will have adult and children toys within there that will be fixed through concrete and will be maintained by the homeowners' association. Next. Totlot area will be something that really will be a totlot orientation. We've identified the product number for Adam on the bottom right-hand corner, and we will stick with that as part of our approval process, and we'll do two of those. We just feel like what the city has provided is significantly better and will dwarf anything that we did of magnitude, so we've gone just with those. We've got a half hour with the little kids, we're just going to go and sit. Next. One of the items that was talked about was the rear elevations, and I think the next slide, I think these are mixed up. This is the previous one that we had proposed to you two weeks ago. You asked me to go back and revisit the backs. We've done decks on all of the units, we've done pop-outs, we've done hardy board, and we've done columns on the back there. So this is the rear of the building that I think has taken on a complete facelift. We've also played with the roofline a little bit more. So every unit will have outdoor living area other than the main level, because there isn't one on the bottom here, those are garages.
Are those actually patios?
They are.
Because I don't see the door, I was just curious.
Side door.
Okay.
So...
That's what I figured, but I wanted to go check.
Yeah, and it was one of those areas we played with, what should the material on the back of that be? So we will probably have a hardy element that isn't just a stucco and brick, and then we created a faux roof on the entryway there. So this is the side that you asked me to go back and visit. I was told when I was walking in, maybe ethos was a better selection. Ethos, in my mind, is a higher grade of stucco on a commercial application. Dollar-for-dollar, it's about the same price as hardy. There's just not the variation that you might have because it's more of a stucco application. If that's something that you'd like me to do, cost-wise, this is a little bit more money. This is a 30-year product, ethos is comparable to that. This seems to give a little bit more change on the side elevation. So I think this is a fantastic side of a building. Next. This is just a blown-up version of what the inside of those units would be. So we have the corners that are prevalent, that have that larger box bay. These are in-between buildings themselves. We've done the same element on the sides and then still have that box bay.
And that's stucco there, correct? Maybe the white?
Stucco. And hardy and brick on the side, which seems very harmonious. So, last meeting, we got into a discussion as to brick. We have limited it to two brick types and colors rather than the tan. We had some conversation with residents in the lobby. They were very mixed. I think rather than having a debatable discussion, I would rather go with the sure, which is going to be palette number one, which I've got a physical copy of that and also some renderings, if you want to see a tangible. The problem, I think, with the screens is every one of them looks different. So we went to a professional printer and had those done. Do you have those there? Okay, we'll just pass those around for you to touch and feel in addition to the boards. You'll go to the next palette, number two. Sorry, so this is the slide where we're proposing palette number one. All of those are consistent, and then the plaza that we have, the main plaza, will also highlight that same brick color. So all of this ties in as one type of brick palette with the same side additions. So if you'll go to palette, the next one, this is palette number two. And then the next slide will show where those buildings are proposed, and then Mike will tie in what our color palettes are.
And you're going to put, just so we're clear on this, you're going to put the, I wasn't here last time, the window coverings and everything will be exactly as is planned, not dependent on tenants and things like that, correct?
Which window coverings are you referencing? The awnings?
The awnings, I meant to say awnings.
Yeah, so in our CCNRs...
They'll be installed now, is what I'm trying to say.
We're doing them today. In the CCNRs, they would be required to go to the homeowners' association and use the same stenciling and be approved. I was in a discussion in Spanish Fork many, many years ago where an inappropriate business had put up a sign, and the city had very little control. So reading your sign ordinance, I want to be a little bit more restrictive even down to the font. Still have to come through the city for permitting, but we want to control what that looks like so that we have harmony.
So the... What I'm trying to say is the awning is going to be where the awning is, and the covering is going to be where the covering is. That's not a tenant choice or anything like that.
That is correct. That will be installed by Edge Homes, and then...
That's exactly what I wanted.
The business owner will have the right to come in and stencil with approval from the homeowners' association.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yes. Should we wait a minute for those to circulate, or should we run?
You can keep...
Okay. Next slide. I was asked to render what this might look like on a corner view. So this is a "you are here" sign with what those buildings will look like from the corner in.
Okay, so it looks like on the corners you got the one color, then the three on the inside are all the same. So they're not alternating then?
So, yeah, so everything kind of on the Y?
Yeah.
Will be the same color, and then we've got the four buildings...
On each end, you've got the color palette one. This is what it looks like.
The bricks are fairly close in color?
Right.
Enough that I think there's some variance, but we're not going to have, as was described last time, something that they felt was conflicting with the other colors.
So the only thing I want to ask, because I'm looking at the stucco here, and then, granted, we were talking about the commercial aspect, and Jackson may be able to help on this. I'm wondering if it'll make more sense to have the stucco that we're using on the commercial, yeah, have it match?
Instead of the hardy?
Match this part, just, no, no, just for the part that it has a stucco, making sure it matches as it goes around or not?
Be happy.
I'm not worried about the back as much so as the size that are seen in the front as it goes around.
We were talking about more of a smooth...
The smooth finish is what it's talking about. And Jackson can help with the description of that if we need...
We can get the same look out of stucco as well. Part of the ethos is the application and a brand name, so we could match what Mike is doing.
Yeah, I think it's more so along the matching that I'm thinking about just with it looking, not so much around the back, but just as you're driving in that circle, everything looks universal.
I don't, maybe even in the back would be appropriate, because if you're a resident, all the backs tie in with the commercial as well.
Yeah.
So it's a finish that we would be after rather than...
Yeah, that's more I'm interested, that's more where my mind went, is just make sure it matches as we go all the way around.
Great. Next. This is the revision of the plaza. We were asked to make some modifications to that. I think it turned out great, better than great, actually, with the backdrop of the buildings behind. Once again, this is just what our corner will look like, standing in the park, of what those buildings will look like and what the plaza will look like on the corner.
The corner plazas are nice.
Please don't smile when you say it. We're gonna sit out there and have a Diet Coke, and then you'll see my vision. Next slide. This is the internal, and they're highlighted where these are going. These are the alley load. Next. These are the front load. As you can tell, we don't have but nine, I believe, driveways that are backing out onto public roads, and everything else will be internally fed. Next. This is what the viewscape will be along the public roads, which will be a front yard-type elevation on that, facing that unit to the homes across the street. Next. This is Adam's corner. This is our transition between the commercial and the residential. We will own essentially up to the sidewalk, so we will have some birmingham and additional landscaping, but this will be the transition between, which feels harmonious. We had proposed a fence at the last meeting, but were suggested that that was not something that would be congruent with what we were doing, so we've eliminated the fence. The structure that you see at the top of the screen there are the parking garages for the units in the commercial application. Next. These are the only ones that are front-loading. Next. And we are back to the very beginning. We have a lengthy CCNR that has addressed the live-work. It is restrictive in the type of business, noise orientation, and the amount of customers that can be in the unit at any given time. So we have taken boilerplate and then made some adjustments. Once again, I think we have the strength of the HOA behind the management of that and will be somewhat restrictive to those businesses. I think it's going to be more popular, to your point. There are individuals that have already reached out that have heard that would like to set up, and they want to know what types of businesses. So I think that they, I think it'll be unique boutique-type businesses that will congregate here, and I think it'll meet what we're trying to do. That's what I have tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any questions now? Okay, I'll let you sit down. This is on for a public hearing that was continued from the last meeting, so I will open up the public hearing at this time. Seeing, oh, okay.
Hi, my name is Heather Garcia, and I'm a Harriman resident, and I'm concerned about the density with this project. After reviewing the master development agreement, it specifies the, that the maximum residential units for this development should be 2,032 residential dwelling units. I know that there's been some questions in other sections of the MDA about, about whether we, whether they're entitled to the additional density. So the way that I'm interpreting it, I'm saying maximum residential units means the development of the property of 2,032 residential dwelling units, and I think that you guys should consider that.
Thank you so much. Seeing no other comments at this time, we will close the public hearing and turn to the Planning Commission.
What was the total number of units now? I haven't heard that number.
The applicant submitted in April of last year a table that is showing what they are anticipating at build-out of 2,061 units. Is that still the right number, Matt? Okay, so maybe I'm looking at an outdated table. Yeah, but that would include the next phase of the mixed-use product. With this, with this project, it would, I don't know if you know off the top of your head, Matt, where we're at in the total number of units?
So I want to say with this project, it would be at like 240, or sorry, 2,040. So, and then we're bringing on 56 units for the mixed use.
For the mixed use.
Right.
For the mixed use, because the other, the corners aren't mixed use, correct?
We're looking at that.
Currently, the 56-year quoting would be the first phase.
The 56 are not on those current units. The 56 are in the four proposed buildings that are our application covers.
But not including those?
Not, not including the corner buildings. So the, I know that it's in your staff report that the city attorney has looked at the number of units and the density, and in the development agreement, both the attorney for HTC Communities and the city attorney in reviewing that, it's a little confusing without language, but it actually notes by the attorneys about 120% maximum, and really that our minimum is that 5.5 units per acre.
So 2,032 times 122, 120% would give you 2,438?
That's correct.
And you're in the 2,096 with the other one.
Without the two other units, I could possibly have some more.
Yeah, but they're not going to have more than, on a scale 30 to 50, I mean, we're not talking hundreds.
Yeah, no, agreed. I guess, I guess the only thought that comes to mind with that is our current, how we're currently set up as a city with the different zones and how individuals can qualify for, I guess, the higher side in those zones of density. It typically is encouraged for them to meet or, I guess, give the city additional things. That's how they tend to qualify. And I know, I know that the MDA is a little bit different, but I do know that's how it currently is set up here. I do think we probably need to have a little bit of a conversation with John just to understand this a little bit more, and I know he's not here. But I do know that's typically how we've seen people qualify for more, higher density than what the minimum amount of other areas are.
Yeah, I know that that is something that ordinances have changed in different zoning areas. This zone is the MU2 zone, which has 10 unit to the acre, and then it actually goes up to 15 if you mix uses. And obviously, we're not even anywhere close to 10. We're still at 5.6.
But at this stage, to be honest, we're really only talking, because even though your application for the mixed use has come in, they're only over by eight. Right, like right now, if, say yours gets put on hold for a while?
Right.
It's, we're only over by eight at this, if we go to the 2,032 discussion. So that's what I'm trying to say, is at this point, since the attorney's not here, we're over by eight units.
Yeah, agreed.
We're over the...
The minimum.
Reaching the minimum, right? We've met the minimum.
From what you're saying, I haven't read it, so...
I mean, I know I've raised that concern too, Mike, about that too, but I mean, if the city attorney, I don't know who else to argue this to, if the city attorney is...
I think the challenge is, and Heather, our alternate Planning Commission member, who also spoke in the public hearing, I had it redlined under my copy of the MDA as well. Maximum residential unit means the development on the property of 2,032 residential dwelling units. So that's really clear. But then another section, under use of density, it specifies, "Master developer may use any of the maximum residential units in the development of any subdivision or any approved commercial site plan, allowing for residential uses so long as the density requested in the proposed development application is no greater than 120% of the density specified by the master plan." So the original master plan had 5.5 minimum units per acre, and then you times it by the area of the, of the project at the time when this was, was approved by the commission and city council. That's where the 2,032 units comes from. And then it says, "At build-out, the minimum density of the project shall be no less than the density specified in the master plan." So...
So the one question I have with that, Mike, on how you read, and I appreciate you read it, because I understand the different perspectives, but I also, when I'm hearing it, what I'm almost hearing is, we can move up to 120% into any one of these units, but we can't go over that 2,032, and that's...
That's how...
That's how I just heard it, I guess.
And again, that's why there was a disagreement.
That's why having legal actually say how or what it means is, I guess, pretty important.
And our city attorney had, can we hear from the city what our city attorney has said?
Yeah.
We've heard it from the developer, I just want to say officially what is our city?
The commission may recall that I had flagged this concern a year ago, I mean, when we first started working on this. And, and of course, I'm new. I mean, I was not here when this was written, and, you know, the applicant disagreed, and so eventually it was taken by the administration to the city attorney and asked for his response, his opinion, and that was his recommendation, which is what I put in the staff report. So that was a reflection of his determination on behalf of the city.
So per the city, they're within the units, they're within their allotted units.
That was the city attorney, yeah. And I think essentially, because of, there's some ambiguity or some lack of clarity, plus there's some conflicting provisions, I think that's, I mean, I can't speak for John other than what I was directed to put into the staff report. That was the interpretation that was made.
The catalyst behind it is my original site plan had almost double the density, based on an attorney's interpretation of what that 120 was. When Mike Bradshaw and I got together, we felt as if the, the right thing to do in the area, tying in with neighborhoods, et cetera, is to shave units and not do what we were proposing on the original. So that's when it went to counsel, legal counsel here at the city, and we came back with what that was. We didn't go back and revisit the site plan. We maintained the density that we were at essentially and have made the changes that we've been asked to make by Planning Commission. So that's kind of how the road that we took to get the professional opinion on what the density actually is.
And I'm like, Adam, if this, if they were pushing up more against the 2,400?
Yeah.
I would be concerned, but eight? I mean, if we're at eight units right now, I don't want to look at the mixed use. I know that was kind of mentioned, I don't want to see mixed use on the end, the stuff that hasn't been proposed. I think that needs to be commercial. Because then, I think that was mentioned, that maybe there'd be some mixed use looked at at the end. But I think, I think after these units, we need to be done with units.
Well, there'd still be the other 50.
No, after the 56, I'm saying. Yes, the future buildings.
Yes. And I'll be honest, I said it in the work meeting, but... And I'll be honest, I said it in the work meeting, but to me, I can see the ambiguity. And to clear that up, I think both developers should help address the walkability factor. And that's why I think we should not require only Edge to do it, but basically work with the city to develop a tabletop intersection for the the entire field to help address and maybe resolve some of this ambiguity on the the true numbers.
And that might be something we can share at the joint meeting with the city council because it sounds like that's something that would have to go through them as well to approve because it's not currently approved approved in the city to do tabletops.
But I would just say, work with the city to improve the overall walkability with this and the other adjoining property owner in the PUD item, not in the subdivision, is what I would say right at this stage. I actually think they've met all of what we talked about. We haven't talked about the density ever.
Right.
And so to me, I I think we have to go with where we've been heading down.
And I do believe that that if we make a motion and approve it, if that's what you guys decide on, we can't always add another item just saying in contingency or depending on legal counsel from the city saying that this is how it's interpreted. Because I think we can add that because it would take away units if the the city legal counsel says no, that's what they're supposed to be about. But it does sound like that that he says that are within lines of where they need to be. So we can't always add another item into this if if we're choosing to approve this today.
When we talk about what they've done, to Steve's credit, they've come back with the live work units, which I think is a huge plus. I think that's going to be a game changer in that neighborhood.
That's probably eight units at least.
But to be fair, he's come back with that, what we requested, and that's.
Yeah.
Well, the architecture, we've done a lot.
I love the work live work units.
One thought on the hook for the tabletop is I have to come back in for condominium plats. You could tie it to the approval on the condominium plat that that's resolved. But I certainly don't want to champion it at city council. I have my own vows there, so if we could.
Oh, I'll be championing it. Don't worry about it. I'm shy once in a while, but I don't think.
And we could come up with a budget and a bonded amount, and the city could build it or or Mike or I could build it as well. So we still have some looks at this.
As I know, we were talking as a planning commission that we only feel like there might be two that are needed in this and where they're tied. And so.
And I just don't think it would be a requirement of the subdivision. I was going to bring that up in the PUD because technically, it's not in their subdivision. So that's why I was going to tie it to the PUD piece.
Commissioner Berbert, I apologize. Did have we closed the public hearing? Did we?
We did close the public hearing.
I must have missed that. I wanted to drive make a note on a correction. There I included in the staff report for the next step of this project, the final site plan, building elevations. I attached to that the high density multifamily design standards, which we've talked about before. There is a conflicting provision in the development agreement and the high density standards relative to spacing of park strip trees. And I thought we had fixed this. It was my fault. The initial draft said 30 feet, but the high density multifamily design standards say the park strips must follow the rule of one tree every 25 feet. And the condition of approval that's been drafted before you tonight is one for every 30 feet.
And that's item one on the staff report, right?
Yeah, yeah. So I just wanted to let you know that there is a conflict. And there was a condition originally that this project must, I think it says shall, comply with the high density design guidelines. So if.
They changed it in second staff report.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I saw.
Where is that that we got it or it's not there?
Combination one.
So in item one in both staff reports?
Yep.
The subdivision one says 30 feet for the trees in the.
They show both should be 25.
I apologize. Yeah, one says 25, the other one says 30.
Is that what we want?
25 is what it should be, according to the.
And we also talked about in the work meeting that the condominium plats need to be, that would be in the subdivision requirement. That's not currently on here. They need to come back to us, correct?
They did add the condominium plat that I thought I forgot.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's number 12. I 12 staring at me in the face. I apologize. Is before any individual unit can be sold?
I need to apologize for the condominium plat. The reason is that our architecture's been bouncing around every time we've met, so we have not completed the condominium plat because the architecture footprint has not been settled on until after I have a motion of approval.
I don't really want to wait till before an individual's.
Condition 12.
I'm just saying, I like the condition, but I don't like waiting till a unit can be sold. I don't think you'll wait that long, but I think we need to have it way sooner than that so we can resolve the intersection. Okay. Prior to building permit? You comfortable?
Or prior to?
I would like to defer to this with the law.
And we're just talking about essentially a preliminary condo plat approval not recording.
Yes.
So, yeah.
So that's what I'm saying. I think we should do that before.
Building permit. Yeah.
Building that one might be too soon. I don't know how.
But they can you can approve before building permit. They don't have to record it until after they're built. So if we need to make adjustments after the units are built and adjust it before they record.
You good with that? That's all I have on the subdivision. I have more discussion on that, the some of the amenity landscaping and some other stuff.
Okay.
That's not for this discussion right here.
So at least we can turn to the planning commission if there's any more comments here.
I was thinking one last one on the architecture. I got him to grin. Well, I was thinking it would, I think it would just add, just make the buildings just a little bit nicer if we went with a 612 pitch on the roof. I think if we were just a little bit steeper, it'd just give a little bit more gravitas to the buildings. Right now, they're a 412. And I don't know, do we ever?
They're not listening. They're not listening.
Hey, Mike?
Oh, sorry. We're good.
Is that is that something I can add on to it? Have it go to a 612 pitch on the roofs?
So not on the condo plat, I mean, not on the subdivision. You could do that on the next one.
The next one's where we can control more of the aesthetics, even though they presented that, that's really where we can put more requirements.
I'll do that then.
Okay. And so we can look at a motion for item 3.1. I I do think that if we wanted to add a 13th item, just saying, making sure we're having legal write off with the amount of units, saying that it is in the standard of the MDA or fits the guidelines. Because that's the thing is, is legal hasn't technically told us that 100% yes, and he's not here. I do know Gordon shared something in the work meeting, but I wouldn't like them saying yes, this fits the guidelines of the MDA.
Well, and there is this staff report that says that about the density. Is that enough?
Is that enough?
Is that enough then to meet?
If that is enough, then I'm good. But I I think because that's the MDA is a legal document for us to exceed it if we're not supposed to, something we can't do.
But he's already looked at it, though.
As long as legal says we're good with it.
Yeah, he's already said that.
Yeah, he's absolutely.
Yeah, according to the density, the discussion.
Then I don't think we need to add another item.
We don't have to like it, but it's I think it's. I do like it. I'm just saying we don't have to.
Then.
Get with that. I'm ready to make the motion.
There you go, Adam.
I move to approve item 3.1 with the 12 requirements, recommendation, sorry, requirements in the staff report with an adjustment to item one to say from 30 feet to 25 foot centers for tree spacing. And a modification to number 12 to say condominium plats will need to be approved by the planning commission prior to building permit.
Building permit issuance?
Issuance. And we're going to change instead of will need, we're going to say shall.
I'll second it. Motion by Adam.
Second.
Second by Lauren, and we'll call for a vote with Andrew.
Yes.
Koby.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Andrea.
Yes.
And Jackson.
Yes.
And then we'll move on to item 3.2. Is there any additional items applicant or staff would like to share on that? Okay, we'll turn to the applicant.
We want to make Steve Maddox Edge home. We want to make a proposal to do 612 roof pitch on our rooftops. If we could go to that elevation on one of the slides with a caveat that some of our hips remain at a 412 for aesthetics and closeness, but the main body of the roof is at a 612 to break up the roof line.
Can you show us what you kind of think, which ones you're thinking?
I don't have it. I'm just, maybe you could articulate it better, but if you could go to one of the buildings on the slide deck.
Yeah, are you proposing all 612 or just the ones around the ring?
On the Y road.
Yeah, yeah, keep going. I think that's you. Whoever's controlling those slides. Who's got it?
I'll push the button. Apparently, my clicker doesn't work.
I got the wrong one now.
I think you've gone too far.
She usually does go too far.
Sorry, keep going.
She's always going too far.
Let's go to the front of that building.
One more. Oh. There you go.
There we go. Mystic haze.
I think there's a bigger one, Brandon. Will you go to?
Yeah, keep going. I think there's.
Oh, one more. There we go. So main body will be at a 612 for volume and then and then the lower roof will remain at a 412 just for aesthetics.
412 where you have the pop outs on the building? So at the, okay.
You good with that?
City building is very similar to that, where the main body of the roof looks to us to be a 612 with some relief.
It may even be an 812, but I think.
Okay.
But I think the 612 will just give it a little bit more gravitas, just give it a little.
But you're okay with that?
I thought it was a great suggestion, Steve. I thought it was a great suggestion.
And the 412 on that. Yeah.
Okay.
612 with four pitch at the pop out or 412 with the front.
He's on a roll. He's a date, man. He's ready.
Yeah, he's ready to go. All right, turn to the planning commission.
Did we just, so was there just going to be the two color palettes or was there one more? I thought there used to be kind of a parchment.
They went to two.
Does it, does there need to be more variety or is this enough?
I I think we're, I think it's actually landed quite nicely, and it relates well back to the city hall. So I think it kind of creates a nice background to the horseshoe, having those colors, those those two color palettes relate well with the horseshoe.
We didn't love that third color. So I think this is.
These are just really similar, so I was just wondering if.
Yeah, six out of seven people didn't like the third color.
Okay.
Six out of seven.
I wasn't here to make a judgment call, so. I don't worry about stuff like that. I worry about model numbers and things, so.
And I think we talked about it before, but I would like to see the smooth. You know, I don't, I'm picky about what material it is, but just the smooth on that. On the stucco to match the.
The commercial, the mixed use commercial.
Otherwise, I think it looks, I love it. I'm excited. Come a long ways.
Yeah, I'm excited about the the work units, work live units.
You did say there's interest in those already? That's great. Wow.
Yeah. All right, if there's no other comments.
Have we, is there a need for like bike racks in the area? I mean, there's only bike racks, I think, close to city hall. I've biked around, there's only like two. I think that would help it be a little more walkable.
And scooter parking?
Yeah.
For Lime.
So I guess the question is, and maybe city staff can help out a little bit with that, is there, because I know here, maybe, but but is that more of the mixed use, more of the commercial that may need that? Or do you think these live work units may have an aspect where they need to bike racks? Because in my mind, I'm thinking there's not going to be as many people going through these every day because it'll limit how many customers, and it may not be as necessary as in the mixed use. Because I did think about that with the other commercial, but that obviously is not what's on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, I think more in the commercial, to be honest. I think if they're going to park them in their garage.
Or the park in the public areas, right? These are more private, private areas. I don't know if you have a personal, you know, your personal bike rack, here's your garage, you know, really, so. But yeah, more of the public and commercial, I agree. Yeah, for multi-use, yeah. Yep.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments? We'll turn to the planning commission for a motion.
I would like to make a motion. Oh, do you have something?
Well, I was gonna, if I make the motion, I can add number 10 for the 612 pitch.
I have two more that I would like you, if you're going to make the motion, so go for it. So one I think we need to have is prior to approval of the condo plat, work with the city and adjacent developer to address walkability and potential raised walkways. That needs to be one.
We'll make that 10.
Or make that number 11, and your 612 can be number 10.
Well, if you make a motion and take and 10 is just 612 pitch on main body of roof.
Okay. I'll just do that then.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything else? I put smooth stucco to to match the mixed use buildings, commercial buildings.
Smooth EFS.
Now, I just said smooth stucco because they're going to do stucco, the building will be EFS.
He says I can do stucco smooth, too. The smooth finish.
The stucco should look like the EFS is what we'll say. Anything else besides those ones? And then, since the city doesn't have this presentation, I'm also going to reference this presentation, whatever is on your computer, needs to be downloaded.
We have to.
Because they didn't, we didn't have it until right now.
Nothing in here is different than.
Because he got up to actually do the presentation, and he had the wrong presentation that the city was presenting. So technically, I am worried that we don't have it.
We haven't. I just, I just opened it.
Okay.
And nothing in here should be different from what's in your package.
Well, it is because it it shows the old light colored brick.
Shows a lot.
It doesn't, yeah, there's not. That's my concern is we. The old balconies and everything. What the staff tried to present, he, yeah, he said this is the wrong presentation.
You could reference the exhibits that were presented in the meeting tonight.
Okay. And then, since you got rid of the fence, can we just go to one last thing? You called it the atom detail, whatever that is, for the landscaping, where you put the fence. Somebody, whoever's clicking, go to that slide.
Oh, Adam's yard.
Adam's corner. My question is, are you going to do that kind of whatever that is, the actual hedge? Okay. All right. I'm not going to. That'll be number 13, a box elder hedge. Sorry, I have to be this way. All right, I'd like to make a motion for item 3.2 to approve it with the staff's nine recommendations with four additional. Number 10, to require a 612 pitch on the main body of the buildings related to the condo units. That number 11, prior to the approval of the condo plat, that the developer will work with the city and the adjacent developer to address walkability and the potential of raised walkways for the U road. Number 12, that the stucco texture will match the mixed use commercial that is to the north of this project.
Can you specify a smooth finish?
Smooth finish is what I'm saying. Well, we, that's the problem is we haven't seen it. I'm saying whatever the stucco finish, the EFS finish on that one and the stucco will match. That's all I'm trying to say, the texture, the texture. So smooth texture. And number thirteen, that they will use a box elder hedge to screen against the, I don't even know how to reference it on this. Yeah, behind the mixed use buildings. And that we will, number fourteen, I guess there's another one, that we will, referencing the PowerPoint presentation that was provided to us by the developer tonight.
May I make a clarification?
Yes, always. I just, I, I'm. I was comfortable with the, when I meant approval, I meant city approval, like recording of the condo plat. Because that's gonna take a while to address how to do the raised access. I'm not super worried about that. I think everybody will work on that as quickly as possible. It'll be another one that I think we should put a requirement on mats as well, so that we can address that soon. It's wherever the stucco, on the condos, on the condos.
On the condos.
Just on the condos. There was also that corner area, right, with the, where we put hardy board, where like.
No, we're still gonna keep the hardy board. Just where stucco. Just where stucco is.
If you look at those buildings right there, if there is stucco, it matches the ephes texture of just the condos, front and back, the entire thing. That's what I'm talking about. Yes, yes. I know, I mean. Go to the next slide. Go one, one more.
Um, there's currently a motion being presented, so let's wait and hear what he says.
Since my motion is on, I want to try and clarify. So can you go to the back of the, the back view? That's where all the stucco we're talking about is.
There's a couple sides and then the back.
Not even the sides, because I think they're stuck.
This is the side between them.
Those would be, instead of looking like roughness, they would be smooth.
That would be smooth.
And. Not that back. That's not the right back. That is the back of the condos. Would be smooth.
The new elevation.
We also reference new elevation. Is that enough confusion?
Are you done with your motion?
I've been done, but I'm getting clarified. Am I done being clarified? All right, a motion by Adam.
I'll, I'll second that.
A second by Jackson and we'll call for a vote. Andrew?
Yes.
Kobe?
Yes.
Yeah, Adam?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
And that'll do it for you tonight. Have fun.
Have a good day. Yeah.
Sincerely, I will put together a PowerPoint presentation of what this would have looked like. So thank you for the emotion and not giving up on us. And we will celebrate at the plaza at some point in the future.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
We are gonna move on to item three point three now, which is a discussion of the proposed community development CD zone. The applicant is the Harriman City, so we'll turn to city staff first and then I think you'll turn the time over.
So this is our third discussion on this topic. Essentially, this is a type of potential form-based code in the city. And we're, we are, this is a tool that would only be used for new, large area development projects within the city. We, within our current general plan, we identify areas that could potentially be annexed. So perhaps on a large annexation. But maybe even within other areas of the city that we may have large new developments coming to the city or being proposed. So this again is just a, we're just researching this topic and seeing if this is a good fit for us. Mike Hathorn has been a consultant that's been working with the city on various planning-related issues. And I think this is, I think we're hoping to kind of complete the introduction of this type of zoning tool tonight. And we'll have to make decisions as far as what we want to do moving forward. If we're actually gonna roll up our sleeves and start drafting or creating a proposal that the city council could consider in the future. So. And you have your presentation on a thumb drive?
I'm plugged in if we can just change the source.
Okay.
Fantastic. Hello again.
Hi, Mike.
Hello. Are you, are you tired of me yet?
No, this is only the third time.
I wasn't here, so I'm.
We see some individuals for months and months and months, so this is pretty normal.
We've been working with these guys for a year, so don't worry about it.
Fantastic. Well, I, I appreciate the chance to be here this evening. And hopefully, if I do my job correctly, I will complete the loop on this. I have some objectives that, that I'm hoping to, to deliver on this evening. And, and I guess our interaction will help me to understand whether I've, I've been able to accomplish that. Just in terms of review, my name is Mike Hathorn. I'm a principal with Community One, which is a community design and planning firm. I, I want to start like I have the, the previous times that we've been together and, and make, just make the reference that I've, I've made previously between zoning and DNA. I've become more and more convinced of this, this relationship, the, the further I, the further I work on it. And part of what I want to help deliver to this evening is an understanding of the metrics that are associated with that DNA analogy. As I've mentioned in the past, the, the, the community, community development code is a template code which requires calibration depending upon the needs of the community in which it will be implemented. But as a, as a starting point, there are metrics that are associated with it that will help in terms of understanding how it actually functions. And I wanna, it's important to me to, to deliver to you an understanding as to where those metrics are coming from as they reside in the code today. The importance of DNA is pretty, pretty valuable. Because if the, if the DNA isn't calibrated correctly, you can clearly have problems. Now granted, this is, this is a facetious example, but it's important to understand that, that, that the relationship in nature as it pertains to, to DNA and, and to us as, as living creatures is, is extremely important. That relationship, as I've, I've introduced previously, carries over to how our built environment works in terms of setting the relationships between, in, in this example that I shared earlier, the, the public realm, the private realm, and the, the, the private facades of buildings. I want to take that a step further by introducing to you the, the, the the example that there is community DNA that is, is rooted in these four key elements. Land, access, structures, and open space. Similarly to how DNA works with its, it, it has, it has four chemical bases. Community DNA has, has the same. And the issue at hand is how you, how you provide for the sequencing that is associated with putting these aspects together in a deliverable format that is, that, that you can both anticipate and expect when, when it's executed. Two of the four organizing principles that we talked about previously are part of this establishing these relationships. The first is the transect, which sets the context based on a spectrum of rural to urban. The second is the plat of Zion, and this, this is, this is where all the metrics are gonna be coming from. And I'm, I want to show you, show you how those, those me- metrics actually factor in. What's interesting about this, and I think you'll, you'll, you'll find this of value to understand, is that the, the plat of Zion is actually very highly recognized as being something that is extremely effective in terms of, in terms of the successful delivery of, of, uh, community. This here is an, is an award that was given to the plat of Zion by the Urban Design Utah Group back in twenty fifteen, recognizing the, the, the foundation that it set specifically for Salt Lake City. What I want you to understand is how thoroughly this, this plat of Zion, which in it, in and of itself was a template for the creation of community was, in the successful delivery of, 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 of community. Within the United States, over a one hundred year time period, Mormon pioneers settled seven hundred and fifty-seven communities, of which only seventy-six failed. More specifically to Utah, four hundred and forty-three communities were settled. Only twenty-eight of those failed. I think you'll find it interesting to know that the southwest part of our county is, is rooted in, rooted in this community building with the use of the plat of Zion as a, as a template formation for the, the creation of, of communities. We have, we have our four southwest county cities represented here. And I think you'll find it interesting to know that Harriman is the oldest. Harriman, Harriman was settled just four years after Salt Lake City was. So, from that standpoint, I, I would consider Harriman a leader in that Harriman was here first. And Harriman has an opportunity now to, to, to lead again. If you, if you look at basically the center and main location for Harriman, which is by, down by the old city hall, you can actually see the, the, you know, the, the foundation of that, that use of the plat of Zion. It didn't, it didn't expand very far. It didn't grow very quickly, but it's, it's, it's DNA is, is still there. And I think what, what I want to help everyone understand as we, as we talk about some of these metrics is, is the, I guess the reverence in, in which the plat of Zion has been, has been given by, by those who have studied it. This is a quote from, from Andres Dwaney. He spoke a number of years ago at the Utah League of Cities and Towns and talked with, with extreme reverence towards the plat of Zion. I find this quote humorous because, because again, of the analogy that he gives in referencing the plat of Zion as a Ferrari, that based on how it, it, our understanding of it has been lost, we've been using it as a dump truck. We now have an opportunity to, to hone in on that. And I think when you, when you take a, when you zoom out on where Harriman was settled, you can, you can see the changes in the development pattern. Now, not to say that one is better than the other, it's just the, the patterns are different and I think they need to be, they need to be recognized as such. But from the, from the, from the, the metrics of the study of the code or of the, of the plat of Zion is, is what gave us the, the impetus or the foundation for actually re-instituting it within a, a, a present day zoning code. And so what I'm gonna, what I'm gonna show you are the, the metrics that are associated with the community plan, the block plan, and the lot plans. And the, the, the impetus of this is, is based in the, the, the creation of community through, through the application of community types. What was, what was studied and what was coded were these nine community types. Going from top to bottom, based on a rural to urban relationship, you have agrarian community types which are meant to stand alone. They're not meant to have touching edges with, with other community types. You have neighborhoods and you have centers. And when you look at, when you look at how, how cities are created, it's, it's, cities that work extremely well are, are, are based on the creation of neighborhoods that have a distinctive center and edge. And this was something that, that was very well articulated as it pertained to the plat of Zion itself in terms of, in terms of having a finite size relative to both the land and the people that would inhabit the, the community that was created. I'm gonna show you some examples of, of community types. This is a, this is a village community type. This is Fountain Green, which is in Sand Peak County. So, going from center to edge of this pedestrian shed, you, you, you get a sense for the, for the size and the scale. The area that was, that was analyzed and studied is shown with the, with the green box. And it was studied down to the point of, of measuring the intensities that were associated with the blocks. And this is, this is how the, I guess you could say the, the, the extraction of genetic material occurred was, was through this, this type of an effort. Next is a, is a traditional neighborhood, and this is, this is looking at Sugar House, which is a neighborhood within Salt Lake City proper. This is the area that was studied specifically, and this is, this is the basis for the, the extraction of, of the metrics of a traditional neighborhood. And then last is an example of an, of a, of a center. This being an urban center, we look, in this particular instance, it was at Logan, looking at Logan. We, we used a different pedestrian shed. We used a half mile radius shed instead of a quarter mile. This is the area that was, that was studied. And this is, this is the extraction point in terms of the, the quote unquote genetic material. At the next, at the next level is, is the block types. The block types work similarly in that there are levels of intensity that are associated with those. And the block, if, if you recall from our discussion a couple weeks ago, the blocks are what make up the community types or the community units. And the intensities are assigned, are assigned at the level of the block. So you, you can go from rural to urban, block types one through six to give you, to give you outputs. We used the plat of Zion block or the Mormon block of six sixty by six sixty, which comes out to a ten acre block. Oftentimes, the, the Mormon block is kind of deified in planning circles because of its size. But what I want you to understand is, is the, the, the nature of its size was never intended to sit as a ten acre block. Its intention was really to be downsized into, into sub-blocks. And what, what, what you see here is the overlay of the Salt Lake City blocks. So, the Salt Lake City block is showing four ten acre blocks. It's then overlaid over different cities so that you can understand the scale that's associated with the Salt Lake City block in relation to other cities. Other cities, as you can see, are a lot smaller in terms of their block sizes. But what's, what's interesting to note in relation to that is because of the size of the block, it, it allows for flexibility in terms of breaking down that block even further. And the, the image that, that I have up here is the overlay of a ten acre block over nine Portland blocks. So what's interesting to note about that is that you could actually reproduce a Portland-like environment using a Mormon block. But the ability to do the opposite is virtually impossible if you're to try and do the same in Portland. Their, their, their pattern is set. Whereas this allows the block to actually, to actually become something that's, that's much more fine-grained if the, if, if that's what the, the intent is. As we studied the blocks, I'm gonna show you a series of, of block studies at different levels of intensity, and all of these blocks are existing blocks in Salt Lake City. The first here, and, and so what you'll see are, are a couple different studies so that we're, we're, we're showing a level of, of intensity relative to the building materi- uh, the structures. But also a relationship to the uses in, in a follow-up slide that's associated with those structures. So this is a, this is a suburban block. And then, it's, it's entirely residential of different lot sizes. And it's all, it's all detached. This is, this is kind of the environment that, that we're used to seeing. But the, 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 the method by which it's delivered and the pattern is, is a little bit different because of it. But the, 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 the method by which it's delivered and the pattern is, is a little bit different because of its. Uh, because of its DNA. Next is a, 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 a general urban block. So we're getting a li- little bit more intense. And you can see how the, how the block has been carved up. Well, the other block was carved also. But you, you can see how the, the size of the ten acre block is, is, is being broken down a little bit further. And allowed for a, uh, you know, in essence, a neighborhood to exist within a, within a ten acre block. Here's the relationship to the types and uses. Uh, we're seeing the introduction of, um, multifamily in the block. You know, we talked about this a little bit the last time I was here in terms of the relationship of, of multifamily. Product at the neighborhood scale. And you know, here's an example of it embedded within a block of, of single family detached. Next is a, a, a block that's, that's urban centered. Buildings are much, much bigger. And a, a lot more intense as it pertains to the, the types and uses that are existing within that block. And then lastly is an urban core block. This, this particular block, if you're familiar with where Exchange Place is in Salt Lake City. This is the block where Exchange Place exists. Um, again, the block is, is, uh, is carved up. Buildings are much bigger. The setbacks are, uh, side setbacks are gone. The buildings are attached to each other. And you're seeing that the primary, uh, condition is, is mixed use. As opposed to, as opposed to residential within the block. So what we were able to surmise as we, as we did these block studies. Is the relationship of the, the output of intensity at the level of the lot. That is connected to the, the associative block type. So that's, that's the metric that, that was extracted. And, and then allows us to, to understand when I, when I say a, for example, a block type four. What that represents in terms of the associative lot types. And what the outputs of those lot types are allowed to be as, as per the code. The, one of the objectives is to try and drive, uh, an opportunity for diversity within these blocks. Diversity both in terms of intensity as well as use. And this, this is a model where we're looking primarily at diversity at the. Uh, within a residential environment, considering the block to be its own little neighborhood. And the opportunity for the block to actually have multiple housing types within the same block. That is, that is one of the objectives. It's not necessarily a, a requirement in the code. The code allows for it, but it's not something that is, uh, that is, uh, that, that the code forces. On, on an applicant to, to provide. Um, at the level of the lot, we talked a little bit about this last time, the, in terms of the. The metrics associated with the lot itself. And those metrics are really setting the relationship that needs to occur between the land and the building. And so depending upon the type of lot and the intensity that that lot allows. Certain building types then automatically start to potentially be paired with that, with that given lot. And I'm just gonna flip through these really quickly, but what you're seeing on these individual slides. Are the, the associative metrics on the left side. The densities that the code allows are directly underneath in terms of the ceiling associated with the lots. And then a very important, uh, metric within the lot. Is the lot frontage that's, that's tied to the lot. And so the, the chart on the right is showing the lot frontage bandwidth. In relationship to the other lot types that are associated with a given block type. That's what's providing the, the opportunity to, to, to generate mix and diversity as it pertains to. The output of, of different building types within a given lot. So as we, as we move down, you'll see. The lots are allowed to, to, to narrow. Um, and then they'll start to expand as you get to the, to the higher intensity size because you're. You're anticipating at the higher end, larger lots containing buildings of multiple stories, mixed use buildings. Whereas at the, at the front end with the lot type one, you're, you're talking about large lot, single family detached as the. As the, I guess you'd say the, the, the default with the, the larger lot frontages. So the, the intensities are, are, are going up as we hit each one of these. I'm just trying to move quickly, uh, to be sensitive to your time. And then within the, within the metrics, I've got a few, uh, a few examples to. To tie to in terms of, in terms of what actually is being, uh, measured at the, at the level of the lot. And the, this first one is, is a representation of. That building and lot relationship as it pertains to. Uh, as it pertains to the, the size of the lot, the, the, the lot frontage. The, the imaginary box above the lot showing you how much. How much can actually be contained on the lot in terms of the vertical nature of the, the building. Next is, is the facade and elevation. This is, this is, in fact, you were, uh, you were talking about this on and off. Without saying facade and elevation with, with, uh, with your Edge Homes discussion. The relationship being that you, you're regulating the, the, the level of detail. Associated with each side of the building, whether it's a, uh, a primary. Focal point or it's a secondary focal, focal point. A facade is a higher level of architecture to, to an elevation. In this particular example, we're looking at an, at an interior lot. So the sides would have, and the sides in rear would have a different level of, of articulation of architecture than. Then, uh, the front of the home, which is facing the public street. That will change based on, on visibility. So a corner lot would have a facade along, along the side of a home facing a public street. If you, let's say had a, a lot that backed, uh, public open space. Again, that would, that would require a higher level of, of detail based on its, on its, uh. On it, on, on its, I guess, visual accessibility, uh, to the public. Next is the understanding of lot layers. And this is how, this is how, uh, the relationship between. The, the, the lot itself, the building and the parking is regulated at the level of the lot. All parking is required to be in the third lot layer. First lot layer is, is basically your front setback between back of sidewalk and building face. The second lot layer is creating the, the necessary distance associated. With the relationship of the first lot layer and the third lot layer. So it's the buffer. And then the parking is required by code to exist only in the third lot layer. So that, that's an element of, of regulation. And then what we're all familiar with is, are the setbacks. Which, which then drive your, your building envelope. And are part of the, what gets factored into, to, uh, the code measurement of, uh, lot coverage. Um, at the level of the lot where you're, you're starting to get into the details associated with the building. Is the regulation of the, the form that the building is allowed to take. And so this is an example of, of taking, taking the building, the, the different pieces. Of the building, the openings in the building, um, the frontages of the building. And, and then the final assembly associated with the building. Those are all. Aspects that get measured at the level of the lot, not before. And that ties back to that principle of subsidiarity that we've, we've, uh, we've talked about. Dealing with, dealing with issues at the time that the issue is relevant and present. Within the, within the, the process of the system. And then ultimately. This is, this is, I think, the, one of the major take homes. Is that in, in coding in this fashion. You're then able to, to, to generate opportunities for the delivery of a multitude of building types. We, we've talked previously about the, 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 the default. That exists in, in conventional zoning today. From a residential standpoint in terms of delivering single family detached product. Single family attached product typically in the form of townhomes. And then stacked flats in the form of condos and apartments. Which leaves a whole multitude of building types absent from what ultimately gets delivered. So I've got a series of slides here that are gonna sho- show you a bunch of residential. Commercial and mixed use buildings. Understanding that that collection is the overall bandwidth that. This system allows to be applied. It doesn't, it, because the, the, the use, which is, which is one of the primary relate, uh, regulators of. Of conventional zoning today is, uh, is simply a function of the container in which it resides. In terms of this code, that container being the building. So that's, that's the relationship. So use is still being, still being regulated. And it can, it can actually be nuanced and regulated even further as it pertains to the. Uh, as it pertains to the community type if need be. But the relationship is tied to the building, which is tied to the lot. So use can vary from lot to lot, um, po- potentially. So here's, here's a series of residential buildings, uh, more residential. Um, you know, everything from, everything from apartments to single family detached. In different, in different types of single family detached, uh, to different attached products.
Hey, Michael?
Yes, sir.
Question for you.
Yes.
So, so I'm seeing all of this and there's so many details of breakdown that make it a better product and I understand that. Do you have an example of sixty hundred acre in here? And we start from the big picture and then start to break down how that works a little bit better?
Yes.
Because, uh, because all the details, until I can see the big picture, they just really fit into the big picture somewhere. So I wanna.
And I.
I don't know if.
I do, I do have those and, and, um. We'll go, we'll go right to that.
That'd be great because I think with some of the projects.
I appreciate you requesting it.
I wanna look to see if the overlay zone with how it would, would work. And how we would, I mean, I understand the details to some extent. I can, I can't grasp it all obviously this quickly, but.
But the concepts, hopefully, hopefully you're getting a feel for the concepts.
Yes, and the overlays and the understanding of how that helps to protect different areas and I think I understand.
I actually wanna see more of what. The code, what you're referring to that, so I can see how I interpret it.
Yeah, yeah, the big picture that then breaks it down and then how that works, I guess.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I've got, I've actually got four different examples of it. I think I'm gonna start with just one.
That would be great. That'd be great because I thi- I think that'll sort of get us into the question mode and so we can ask the things that.
Perfect.
That may go into these details a little bit, but.
Okay, so let's, we'll skip the rest of the buildings and. Let me do it this way. I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna go to a real life example. Um, and this is one that, this is one that I've referred to. And I'm gonna use this because of the, because of the relationship to the, to the planned community zone. Um, so we're, we're gonna, we're gonna multitask here and double dip a little bit. Um, you've gotten some exposure to the planned community zone and I, and I have re- referenced. Uh, in, in previous meetings that, um, I had the. Whether it's good or bad fortune, the opportunity of actually working with the planned community zone for eight years. On, uh, on property in Saratoga Springs. Um, I want you to pay particular attention to this slide here because this is part of. This is part of where the disconnect, uh, is realized. Oftentimes you'll see references to zoning as it pertains to objectives that are trying to be met. And the, the planned community zone is no different. If you looked at the county's version of the planned community zone, it had a list that is identical to this. They all have the same impetus, although they, they've been tweaked in, in, uh, in different cities when, when they've been used. But they all say the same thing in terms of it, in terms of its objectives. Without going into the detail, I'll tell you that by no means. Can the planned community diso- zone deliver on any of these. It does not have the ability to do that. So that, that's a problem right out of the chute. This is the property that I've been referring to. I quoted a little height. It was actually twenty eight hundred and fifty-six acres. In Saratoga Springs. And I got involved with this property as it was being prepared for annexation, zoning and entitlement. The bottom right-hand corner gives you the details on the entitlement associated with the property. There was a lot at stake with this property. Uh, sixteen thousand residential units, ten million square feet of non-residential. Uh, which equated to twenty thousand, six hundred and twenty equivalent residential units. Which in other words is water. Uh, Saratoga Springs, no entitlements come without accompanying water. So the, the two are linked together in that, in that instance. What was delivered in the first step of the planned community zone process was a district area plan. This is the district area plan. Every one of those colors is representative of a place type. Because that is the, that is the currency typically associated with the planned community zone as a place type.
You start to break it down into blocks at this level or when you get more granular?
In my opinion, and I'll, I'll show you the details on this, this is way too granular, way too macro. We're getting into levels of detail in terms of. Us, placing these place types on the ground at, at, at a very macro level. And we, we had to, and I'll show you in the next slide, we actually had to back out of that. These are the place types. So it's, it's a description of what it is, what they're trying to achieve. The associative densities that are associated with them, open space and so forth. Um, there's ten of them. They're laid on the ground on the left side. So that, the, the left side is the, is the district. District area plan level of detail, which is supposed to be very macro. But as you can see, it's very, very, very detailed. In the bottom right-hand corner of each one of those, you'll see a line that's around a particular area. This was this, that particular area was the first. The first piece of property that was carved off, sold into the development community and developed. On the right side, what you're seeing is the equivalent of. A development area plan in the community development code. Internally, based on my own modeling, the property was broken up into neighborhoods. Rather than dealing with these place types. And if you look in each corner, on the left side, there are five place types within that box. We actually had to go in and undo that in order to, to move forward because it was so detailed. We got it reassigned to, uh, a traditional neighborhood. And then we began the process and the way that the, as I referred to earlier, the way that the planned community zone works. Is it identifies a series of steps, but it doesn't tell you what the step consists of. So we had to negotiate what the community plan step was and what the village plan step was. What we did is we took the community development code and used its DNA. To, uh, to establish what the community and village plans were. Does that look familiar?
Yeah.
This is the, this is the community plan within the planned community zone using the Community Development Code DNA. So these are your block types.
Okay, so this is what I wanna start understanding.
Yeah.
So we get here.
Yeah.
Here is the, the community planned or development zone, right?
Yep.
This is how we're looking at it. And you've started to define different areas, BT4, which has a definition of, and maybe you can flip to one of those definitions, so we can...
Doesn't really matter.
No. So, but then we break down into these. But at, when you phase it out, what is the process? Is it first, what is going to be the open space, and then you start breaking down the zones? I'm just trying to understand how the phasing process to get to this goes.
So I think, I think it's important to understand what's a little bit challenging in this, in terms of, in terms of its demonstration, is you don't have the code in front of you to necessarily understand what's coming, because that's part of the beauty in this. You're seeing a level of detail, but you're also not being exposed to the granular nature of detail that's still to come.
So what do we gotta do to get to there? I wanna, I wanna, me personally, I wanna see that.
You will. What I'm trying to, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to explain is, when you have the code and in its totality, even though you may be looking at this level of detail, you know what's coming next. You know what the metrics are that are associated with the next step, and you understand the bubble-up effect that pertains to, right now, we're just looking at gray, you know, different shades of gray tied to block types.
But I guess for me, I can't, I can't, I can't debate or argue if, I mean, you're just saying, yeah, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. I get that, but I wanna see...
How's that? Does that help? This is the next step.
Not really. I wanna see the code to say, I mean, how it got to that point. I wanna read it.
Oh, well, I'm happy to do that. I can provide that to you through Michael, I'll provide, I'll provide that to you offline if you're interested in that.
That, to me, would be more beneficial, so that I could actually talk to you about my concerns with A, or B, or C, or whatever, how, if it's five pages or two sentences, I don't know. But then I could actually understand what that reference is versus, I mean, you're telling us how a community is developed, which I totally get and understand, but I wanna see how the code helps me ensure that I'm comfortable with the way that's guiding Harriman, and that's just me.
I understand. That wasn't the assignment I was given.
Oh, okay.
But hopefully, through, through presenting, you know, in essence, a case study, you can, you can actually see what was outputted here. Because this is, this is a, this is a traditional neighborhood that has been in production for three years. The developer anticipated it taking about six, and they are almost done. It's gone extremely well for them. This is, this is the equivalent of a bunch of block plans. So we have, we have the assignment of the blocks. At the next level, you're assigning at the level of lots. So you can, you basically pull the sheet back in terms of the block type, and you see the relationship in terms of the lots that are associated with each one of those block types. That, in essence, and this is part of the developer's programming, is the relationship between the block, or excuse me, the assignment of lot types and the, the product that they went with. So you're looking at an area that's about 180 acres, where they have delivered eight different products. Now granted, the first three are just different, single-family detached with different lot sizes, but they are hitting different demographic and price points. And what you're seeing is something that is very, very difficult to do under conventional zoning, in terms of delivering this many, this much product without, you know, without specific zoning that's associated with each one of those blocks. And this is, this aerial is dated by about a year, but you can see how, you know, you can see, you can see on the ground what's actually being done. You can see the pictures there on the left side. I've got a few more.
That's on the east side of Redwood, right? If I'm going south?
Yes, yes. Just off of Redwood and just south of 400 South, in Saratoga Springs.
These are the ones that remember the whole red discussion years ago.
Late in red? Yeah, yeah.
I will say that it wasn't, the delivery wasn't perfect. This is, this is one of the things that drives me insane about this particular project.
Not the tree, right?
Well, you've got a tree in the middle of the alley. That's, that's a fun thing. But you have, on the left side are our rear-load product, rear-load cottages. On the right side are front-load townhomes.
Look at that nice big Ford F-350 sitting there. Look at that. He's only overhanging two feet.
This was...
Is that covered in the code?
What's that?
Is that in the code, protect against that?
Protect against what?
The big truck overhanging in the parking lot there.
We had to write an ordinance for that.
No, that's a, I mean, you know, that's a function of calibration. I mean, if that's, if that's something that's, that's an important objective in Harriman, then you calibrate for it. If it's, if it's not, then you have, you have shorter driveways that don't allow for parking. It just, it depends upon what the nature of the, you know, the value system and the objectives of the community are.
So is Saratoga using your code right now, or is that the project that you did as a developer?
I didn't do that. I worked, at the time, I worked for the LDS Church. So I was, I was part of, I was part of helping...
The master planning of that.
Shepherd, the builder, Dr. Horton, through the, through the city's process. And like I mentioned, we used the Community Development Code as the, as the DNA that didn't exist in the planned community zone, to, in order for them to deliver on their entitlements that came with the property. These are the challenges, in my opinion, that are associated with the, with the planned community zone. While it identifies process, it does not identify the details of what the process is. That is a major failure. While it has admirable purposes, it doesn't have the substance to deliver on what those, what those particular objectives are. It poorly defines the regulation of use, in that it's silent on use. It has a disconnected administrative relationship between the size of the property and the decision-making responsibilities based on the property size. That had to be, we had to put that in ourselves in order to, in order to get it. While it anticipates incremental decision-making, it doesn't actually deliver on that, and there is no flexibility in it, because you're having to negotiate everything. Those are, those are failures, in my opinion. I've got other examples, but I absolutely want to be sensitive to your time and not, not take more than, more than you're willing to give me. So I guess at this point, I can either share more, or I'm very open to answering questions if you have some that you'd like to ask.
I think probably looking to the planning commission, see if there are questions at this, this time, and then we'll probably move on from that point, I think, unless the planning commission...
I don't have any.
Are there any questions for Michael at this point?
Commissioner Berber, if I may, and Mike, you can correct my terminology, but as I've been listening to your presentation and explaining kind of how this tool works, essentially, I think one of the advantages of this type of zoning tool is that as you go from the macro to the micro level of planning, as you choose that macro type, it predicts what you can do next. It informs the next layer of decision-making.
Yeah.
And I think the challenge that we're having is, is under our MDAs, or under the PC Zone, if we were to have one, is that we have these very aspirational goals.
Right.
Like you were saying, I was looking at those statements under the PC Zone. They're very good. They're good statements. But the frustration that we have seen in working within the MDA is we have these, we always talk about the shiny car, but we, but it doesn't get delivered. There's a, there's a breakdown between the vision to the actual product. And, and I know that this is a very detailed conversation, and maybe, maybe we're done for the night. We've already had a lot on our plates already. But it's having these layers of details built right into the ordinance that actually delivers the shiny car.
So I agree with that.
And I'm understanding it. I'm seeing how these pieces relate together, and that's why you've tried to be very careful explaining, you know, the lot relationship to the block, to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm understanding it, and maybe if we showed, shared with the commission members an actual sample copy of the code, because they're very familiar. Adam's been on our planning commission for...
Five years.
Five years. So he's, he's been around the block a few times. So I think he's ready to kind of dig in and look at it.
And that's why, when you use Saratoga, for example, they live 100% off of development agreements. So that's where a question of mine is, is, is that really getting us away? That's why I wanna see the code, is, I wanna see, I mean, I've been in meetings where they've told me, we're tied, we don't even really need a planning commission because it's so tied down, which to me, that's not what I would hope for. When I, when I met with them, it was very, it was more of a, you have to do it, so that's why we have a planning commission, more so than, than what I would hope a community would have, because you need to have that dynamic dialogue moving forward. So that's why I wanna kind of more see the, the code reference, so I can understand what pieces it does meet. And then I know I would have much more questions related to...
Well, I will, I will, I will forward a copy of it to Michael.
Perfect.
And then he can, he can distribute it, and you can, yeah, you can go to town on it and digest it and, and really get into it.
Yeah, no, that's great. I mean, my fear, my fear of this, because, because the concept and idea, I love it. But, but I look at it, and I'm just, I'm sitting here wondering, is this too much theory and not enough applicable yet? Because it almost seems like we're not getting to the point where it keep going around, and my fear is implementing something that is so confusing for the city and the applicants and developers, it's not something that makes sense, and I gotta get past that. Because that's where I keep going back to, because I'm like, okay, I wanna see how this works. And I'm still not seeing it. I'm seeing there's lots of moving parts that make a lot of sense, but I'm not seeing the applicable nature of it. And that's where I'm struggling.
I have, one of my other case studies in here is American Fork. I'm happy to share that if, if you wanna see it again. It's working in American Fork. It's, it's working like a dream. So it's, it's not theoretical.
I don't think...
This is not a theoretical code. It's...
I don't think it's that. I think, for me at least, I don't know, from what you were saying, it kind of sparked. For me, before we'd like, I would like to see a case study. I'd like to see the code, and then be more familiar with the code, and then see how that, with your case study, can either click in my brain or give me more questions to ask. That's kind of what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I think you're right on, Adam. If we had a copy of the code that we can read beforehand, come back and then see the case study. I think it would make a lot more sense, and an opportunity for us to discuss amongst ourselves and with you.
So I really like the layering idea, and I like the concept of what everything is, but I'm just not seeing the application of it very clear yet. That's where it's really struggling. Even when you talked about some of the stuff tonight, I was like, okay, I'm not seeing how this steps goes through and applies, and is something that, that improves the process and makes it simpler, but also provides a better product overall. And that's what I was hoping to see tonight, based on our last meeting we had.
And Michael, do you understand this code pretty well, then?
No, I'm, I'm understanding the advantage of it. I'm understanding how it's structured. I haven't seen an entire code, because it's, it's a pretty large document.
It's beefy.
Yeah. Now, now, and what Mike will share with us, he's been mentioning, is that it'll have a bunch of numbers, a bunch of standards and metrics and measurements. Our job would be to adjust those for us, right?
Because we don't have to follow that code exactly.
No, and that, that would never be the intent. I would never want to see you do that, because, you know, just comparing, comparing Harriman to where, you know, where I have it implemented in American Fork, the objectives are completely different. And so the calibration is necessary, so that when we're speaking of the objectives that, that you want to deliver on in the city of Harriman, we are calibrating so that those objectives can actually, you can go through and go, yep, it's doing that, it's doing that, it's doing that. One of the other things that I can also provide you, and this, this might be overkill, is I can provide you with a set of mock applications, actual submittals, mock submittal applications, so that, you know, if you're going through the code and you're reading about, you know, what the community plan is doing, well, why not have a, a community plan that you can look at and say, okay, here's the, here's the output based on what the developer would be submitting under this code? Would that, would that be, I mean...
I think if we're gonna reach out and have to go with a different approach, then I think we gotta do a little more studying on our part, so I don't see that hurting anything, to be honest.
Okay, so I'll deliver, deliver you a set that you can, you can have that causal relationship between the code and, and what, what the, what the submittal documents potentially look like.
Sounds exciting. I'm wondering, I don't know how this would be possible. I mean, we were talking about American Fork, and we're talking about Saratoga Springs. Is there something here in our city that we could look at and say, okay, could we go back and, if we could do this different town center, you know, could we plan that out using this zone? Does that make sense? Do you see what I'm saying?
Do we maybe wanna schedule a field trip, and maybe actually go look at American Fork?
It's not a lot to see. I mean, it's all...
Aerial type.
I think...
It was like, me, I'd like to digest it a little bit.
Yeah. Because I've been reading a lot about it, and I get, I love it. I'm just, absolutely, I'm all on board.
Let's, let's put our heads together. Maybe we can see if we can...
I just, at the same time, I wanna make sure that this overlay zone, I mean, we've had three meetings so far, and we're still trying to understand it, let's be honest. I wanna make sure that this overlay zone accomplishes not only giving us the product we want, but also improving the process of a developer and the city working together.
What are the mechanisms of how that works?
Exactly. Because I don't want it to be something that, okay, something that used to take us this amount of time, it's actually been extended, because it's a lot more complicated for us to get through this. And I wanna make sure that, that we can have a benefit all the way around for everyone.
Is this a three-step process? They come in and they propose a neighborhood, and then you propose this, and then you propose this?
Yeah, I sort of understand that, because it is true, our city is growing very quickly, and unfortunately, we don't have very patient developers for some reason. I don't know why. I think it might have to do with money, but I'm not sure.
Time is money. Yep.
I did wanna ask, how long has it been implemented at American Fork?
It will be a year, the end of November.
Very cool.
Okay, so I have some assignments that I will, I will fulfill, and then, and then I will just coordinate with Michael. You can give Michael your, your feedback in terms of, in terms of potential next steps. And, you know, we'll go from there.
All right.
Sounds awesome.
I appreciate it so much, Michael.
My pleasure. Thank you for the opportunity.
It's very impressive with all the detail. It really, it really is. I'm just trying to really understand the application of it and how that works.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I'll turn to the planning commission for any additional comments at this time.
I think we ought to, it's probably appropriate to talk about making sure with the city council, we're working with them on these new tabletop type. You know, we need to get that going, so I know, maybe this is the time to make that comment.
Yeah, so Gordon and Blake obviously both agreed that they want to introduce that into our engineering standards.
Yep.
And that will be, yeah. I'm trying to remember, will the planning commission make a recommendation on those to the city council?
Yeah, we'll bring you the standards. You don't technically have to make a recommendation on them, but we'll bring you.
You can see it.
Sounds good to me. Okay. So just want to formalize that. Thank you.
Anything else? Any other comments? All right. The next city council meeting will be held Wednesday, October ninth, 2019, at seven P.M. The next planning commission meeting will be Thursday, October seventeenth, 2019, at seven P.M.
That's today.
The what?
That's today.
Oh.
That's today's meeting.
Oh, that's today's meeting. Oh, yeah, we're two behind on this.
The first two have already happened.
We're two behind on this. Okay, the next meeting will be five-point-three, which is city council meeting, Wednesday, October twenty-third, at 2019, seven P.M. And then a joint planning commission city council meeting, Wednesday, October thirtieth, 2019, at six P.M. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much, guys.